Good evening. It is 6:53, and I will call back into open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on August 21, 2025, beginning at 6:53. Thank you for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone, and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting, and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted, except for that young one over there. And anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted out by the security attending the meeting. We welcome civic input, but insist that we remain respectful and civil. We thank you for your cooperation. At this time, please join student Justin Jackson from Sheridan Elementary for our pledges of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, indivisible.
You may be seated. We'll now have a moment of silence. To learn a little bit more about our student who led us in the pledges tonight, I'd like to welcome our Chief Communications Officer, Tyne Northington.
Well, he started with a round of applause, so give it up once again for Justin. Justin Jackson, you want to stand up so people can, as I share a little bit about you, they can look at you and know who put a face with the name. But he is a sixth grader at Sheridan Elementary School. His favorite subject is reading, so we love that. Favorite teacher so far this year is Ms. Buckner. And I asked him what he's enjoying most about this school year, and he said his work ethic is on point. Now, he has an incredible family, and in fact, his brother, a 10th grader at Arlington High School, got him into playing chess. And he's actually won third place in the UOL competition. Mom says she got a board for the brother, and then they kind of all decided to play. And so now we've got a family playing chess, which is amazing. A sister graduated from Lamar. We've got mom and grandma proudly here this evening. So we know that you'll do great, and we also know that you're an artist. So you had your artwork displayed at the Cowboys Stadium back in May, and we're excited to see where he'll go. So he'll be back here. He says this is his first time, but not the last time. So we'll make sure that he has pizza next time he comes. That is his favorite food. So thank you so much, Justin. We have a certificate for you.
All right. Also on point with that first name, a great name.
And the bow tie.
And the bow tie.
Yeah, and the bow tie.
Our first part of our agenda tonight is the recognition portion. We only have one item tonight, and that's to recognize our Martin High School flag football team. So I will turn it back over to Ms. Northington.
Thank you so much, President Chapa. If I could ask our board representative to join us?
Yes, Ms. Richardson will be joining you tonight.
And we've got a packed house. I'm sure you guys can tell we've got some famous faces in here, so we're going to get situated. We have several students. Here we go, we'll start there. So tonight, just for all the parents to know, we will be taking a large photo at the very end, and that's when we'll ask you guys, you can take your own photo. We'll also share these on Flickr and on the district's Facebook pages, so you can get that official photo very quickly there. Tonight, though, I do want to say we're honoring one of the most incredible things that I've done since we've been here, which I'm so excited. We've got the Dallas Cowboys Girls' Flag Football League 2025 Champions from Martin High School here this evening. This past May, these ladies made history by winning the very first Dallas Cowboy High School Girls' Flag Football League Championship at the Frisco Center in Starr. Their victory not only secured the championship title, but also marked an important milestone in the growth of girls' flag football in Texas. Of course, their success would not have been possible without the leadership of three amazing coaches. We've got Coach Patrick Dunn, Tyler Clark, and Scott Trussell joining us tonight, but that's not all. We actually have another special guest joining us tonight. We have, representing the Dallas Cowboys, please welcome Rowdy to the stage helping Rowdy's coming around. He's gonna come help us hand out the certificates to you guys, so we'll have a lot of fun. And as he comes down, I'm gonna ask Brooklyn to come right over here. There's a large list. So we've got a lot of our team members here tonight. We actually have certificates for all of them, but I want to make sure that we are honoring those who are here. So give it up for, we're gonna start calling this list, we're gonna create a huge group in the middle. Rowdy's gonna be a part of it. He's also gonna give some love to everybody. So our first player they're honoring tonight is Lola Burks. Our next is Juliana Christmas. I've got Lauren Massey coming up next. Lauren's been practicing her smile all evening. We gotta see. I know it's there. Megan Meredith. Jeanann Nijam? Yes, did I say it right? J.C. Jess Ford. And our last member of the team joining us is Jazz Ross. Come on up, Jazz. The man carrying the hardware, though, tonight is, give it up for Coach Patrick Dunn and the other coaching staff joining us tonight. So awesome. So we're gonna have everyone kind of staggering. As we, before we take the picture, I do want to say we have a special guest tonight joining us. So as we try to take the picture, I'm gonna invite State Board of Education District 13 Rep. Dr. Tiffany Clark, who has a special presentation for us tonight.
It is an honor and privilege to be here and to serve District 13, which encompasses Dallas and Tarrant County. Ladies, congratulations. The proclamation reads, "Whereas Arlington Martin High School has demonstrated exceptional athleticism, teamwork, and perseverance throughout the 2025 season of the Dallas Cowboys High School Girls' Flag Football League. And whereas the Martin Warriors have made history by capturing the first-ever championship title in the league, held at the prestigious Ford Center at the Starr and Frisco, home of the Dallas Cowboys. And whereas the victory not only marks a milestone for Arlington Martin High School, but also represents a significant moment in the advancement of girls' athletics in Texas, showcasing the rising talent and dedication of young female athletes. And whereas the team's success reflects the unwavering support of their coaches, families, school staff, and the broader Arlington ISD community, who have championed the growth of flag football and empowered student athletes to break new ground. And whereas the Warriors' championship win stands as a beacon of inspiration for future generations, proving that with determination, unity, and heart, anything is possible. And now, therefore, I do hereby offer this proclamation in recognition of their historic achievement and in celebration of their contribution to the legacy of excellence in high school sports. And in official recognition whereof, I hereby affix my signature this 21st day of August 2025. Dr. Tiffany Clark, State Board of Education, District 13.
We're gonna huddle in together, and our board members are gonna stand and then join us kind of in the middle, so we can get everyone in this picture. It's a big group. Yes, and do you want to come on up, Marlene? Well, take a few parents, you're welcome to come on up behind Spence. He'll share the photo, everyone will be smiling. Want to make sure our board members, we can see all of them. Hold on. Wait, one more. Dr. Smith, I know you wanted to say a few words right after this to the team, and one more. Hold there, we go.
I know better than to compete with Rowdy, but all I want to say is, ladies, we are extremely proud of you. Thank you for representing Arlington ISD so well and Martin High School so well. We are your biggest fans, even though Rowdy's here too.
This concludes tonight's honors and recognitions. Thank you so much, Rowdy. Everyone give Rowdy a big, and to our Warrior Nation, thank you so much, ladies. Dr. Chapa, this concludes tonight's honors and recognitions.
Thank you, Ms. Northington. Thank you, Rowdy, for being here. And girls, don't, we will have a brief reception after recognizing our administrative appointees. So for our flag football team, if y'all want to wait in the lobby, we will have a brief recognition reception here momentarily. This is Rowdy's show now. I'm just, I'm just here. Rowdy is staying, okay. All right. The next item on our agenda tonight is administrative appointments. This is an item that we do take action on. However, I'm informed that we have no registered speakers to speak on the appointments item, so we will defer open agenda forum until after our reception. Do I have a motion to approve the individuals discussed in closed session?
Motion.
I have a motion from Ms. McMurro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Mr. Will Banks. We'll move to vote. All trustees voting in the affirmative, the motion carries unanimously. I'll turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Thank you, President Chapa. It's my honor tonight to welcome a few administrators to the administrative family in Arlington ISD. And let's start tonight by announcing our Mary Moore Principal, Ms. Raven Jackson. Raven, come on up. Mrs. Raven Jackson is a dedicated educational leader with a strong background in instructional coaching and elementary classroom teaching. Her experience as both an assistant principal and instructional coach demonstrates her ability to guide teacher development, strengthen curriculum delivery, and foster student achievement. With a master's in educational leadership and a passion for cultivating a positive school culture, she is well-prepared to lead More Elementary with excellence. Welcome, Raven.
President Chapa, members of the board, and Dr. Smith, thank you for this incredible honor. First, I want to thank God for ordering my steps. I also want to thank my husband, our two girls, my family, and my friends for their unwavering love and support. To my Mary Moore staff and the Mary Moore community, you are the heartbeat of our school, and I'm so grateful to serve alongside you. To the leaders and mentors who have poured into me along the way, thank you for believing me and helping me grow. I am truly excited to lead Mary Moore into this next chapter, and I am committed to doing the work to help all of our students thrive.
Next, I would like to welcome our new principal at Pope Elementary, Yolanda Riley So Rowdy got things rolling tonight, I can tell. Yolanda brings nearly two decades of experience in elementary education with a proven track record in instructional coaching, academic leadership, and student success. Her progression from classroom teacher to principal reflects a deep commitment to instructional excellence and community engagement. With a master's in educational leadership and extensive campus-level experience, she is well-positioned to lead Pope Elementary with vision and dedication into the future.
Thank you, President Chapa, members of the board, and Dr. Smith, thank you for this opportunity. I am truly honored to be named and serve as principal of Pope Elementary. Over the last two years, we have great gains, and I look forward to building on the momentum with the support of our standing teachers, staff, parents, students, and community partners. As I have stepped into this role, the teacher and parent support have been overwhelming. And hearing the students say congratulations reminds me why this work is so meaningful. I am grateful to my executive directors, the many principals and assistant principals I've served under, and in Arlington and Shake My Leadership, to Ms. Brighton, who has mentored me through this process to principalship. Most importantly, my family, who always supports me in all of my crazy things that I do, these journeys I've taken on in these endeavors. Lastly, to my Panther Nation family. Thank you for your continued support and grace as we have navigated changes in leadership, the construction on the campus, and the work that we have ahead of us. We have work to do, and I am ready to lead. Together, we are game changers in action, so let's level up, level up! Let's go.
Next, please join me in welcoming Ashworth Assistant Principal Herman Kilgore. Mr. Kilgore brings over two decades of experience in elementary and middle school education, complemented by leadership roles in both instructional and administrative capacities. His background spans diverse educational settings with a proven record in curriculum, leadership, campus culture, and student achievement. With advanced degrees in education, business, and health systems management, he offers a unique blend of instructional expertise and strategic leadership to Ashworth Elementary. Welcome, sir.
President Chapa, members of the board, Dr. Smith, and most importantly, my wife, Vicky, and my son, Joshua and Harrison. I want to take a moment to sincerely thank you for the opportunity to serve as assistant principal. It is truly an honor to work alongside such dedicated educators, staff, and families who care deeply about the success and well-being of our students. Every day, I'm inspired by the resilience and potential of our students and the passion of our teachers. Together, we are building a school culture that values growth, inclusion, and excellence. I am grateful for the trust you placed in me, and I remain committed to supporting our school's mission in helping every student thrive. Thank you for your continued support and for allowing me to be part of something so meaningful.
And last but not least, please join me in welcoming our new Miller Elementary Assistant Principal, Christina Flowers. Ms. Flowers offers over 15 years of teaching and leadership experience with a strong background in both general and special education. Her roles as a team and level lead demonstrate her ability to guide collaborative planning, support instructional excellence, and foster inclusive learning environments. Currently completing her master's in educational administration, she is well-prepared to contribute as assistant principal at Miller Elementary. Congratulations, Christina.
Thank you so much. God is so good. President Chapa, members of the board, and Dr. Smith, thank you for the opportunity to serve the staff, students, and community of Miller Elementary School. I'm truly honored to step into the role. I would also like to thank Principal Angela Robinson and Executive Director Dr. Shelley Austin and my current coworkers for the opportunity to work alongside you. I'm excited to learn from and grow with you as we support our learners. I want to thank my sons, Keandre and Jaquelyn Flowers, proud graduates of Martin High School. It's a full-circle moment to now be a part of an elementary campus shaping future warriors. To my family, friends, and the incredible administrators I've worked with, many of whom I now call friends, thank you for your constant support and encouragement. And to my former students and colleagues, thank you for the lessons, the memories, and for helping me become the leader I am today. I'm eager to contribute to the success of Miller Elementary School with commitment, compassion rather, and a clear sense of purpose.
All right. Congratulations to our appointees and those receiving recognition tonight. We're gonna take a brief recess to celebrate with everyone. It is 7:14. Trustees, let's aim to be back at the dais at 7:25. All right, it is 7:28, and we are back from recess. We'll move on to the open forum part of our agenda tonight. Ms. Acosta, do we have any speakers register for open forum?
President Chapa. President Chapa, we do not.
Thank you. We'll move on then to our next agenda item, which tonight is a public hearing. This public hearing is on the 2025-2026 federal grant allotments, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Trustees, Dr. Wertz is going to lead you through a required public hearing that we have for all of our federal dollars that we receive in Arlington ISD.
Good evening, President Chapa, members of the board, Dr. Smith. I'm here tonight to review our 25-26 federal grant allotment entitlement monies that we'll be planning for expenditures this year. The purpose of this hearing specifically is in compliance with Board Policy CB Local, which requires that we hold a public hearing and provide notice of federal grant applications, and also give an opportunity to publish this information on our district's website. As you know, we have three overarching federal grants that we operate under. The first one is the Every Student Succeeds Act, and that's typically known as our Title Funds. We have Title I, Title II, III, and IV. Title I is primarily used to provide our campus allotments, so monies to each of our individual title schools to serve students who have additional needs. We also use these funding to support interventions in the classroom, family engagement, and some of our social and emotional learning opportunities. Our Title II Part A, which equates to about $2.1 million, is primarily used to support our professional learning and our coaching practices here in the district. And then Title III Part A, which is directed specifically towards supporting our immigrant education and our emergent bilingual programs, that funding is primarily dedicated to salaries, professional learning, and also providing resources in the classroom. Title IV Part A is a fund that we use to provide supplemental and enrichment learning opportunities for students. We also fund our PBIS and restorative practice support through our title fund, and most of that fund is really dedicated towards supporting safe and healthy students. Our second grant that we're here to talk about tonight is our Special Education Consolidated Grant, known as IDEA-B. As you can see on the screen before you, there are three components to that. There's a formula-based program. There is a program that's dedicated towards providing resources specifically to students who are receiving special education services in the pre-K environment, and also discretionary deaf education funds. Those dollars are dedicated primarily also to support staff salaries and also resources in those classrooms. And the last one is our Perkins Five Grant, which is focused on our career and technical education program. That dollar value is about $641,000, and we utilize these funds to pay not only salaries, but also to fund experiences that students have inside and outside of the classroom, purchase equipment, and also other resources to help supplement their career tech programs. So those are the grants that we've applied for this year. These are our planning amounts that we've been working from, that we'll utilize this year to help support our programs.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. We will now open our public hearing for the 2025-2026 federal grant allotments at 7:31 PM. Ms. Acosta, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak regarding the federal grant allotments?
President Chapa, we do not.
Okay, there being no speakers, then I will now close this hearing at 7:32 PM. Are there any trustees with comments or questions for Dr. Wertz? Okay, seeing none. Oh, wait. Ms. Fowler.
Thank you, President Chapa. Dr. Wertz, when will we get the good news that we have received these grants?
Oh, we've already received the NOGA. So typically, what happens, title dollars are usually designated in July. I think you're referring to the recent hold of funds. Those funds have been released.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Dr. Wertz.
You're welcome.
We'll now move on to our committee and staff reports portion of the evening. We have four items tonight. Agenda item A is our Finance and Academics Committee Report. I'm gonna turn it over to our Vice President, Sarah McMurro, who chairs the Finance and Academics Committee. Ms. McMurro.
Thank you, President Chapa. Last week, our Finance and Academics Committee had the first meeting of the school year, and this committee is comprised of myself, Trustee Fowler, and Trustee Mike, so I appreciate y'all for serving on that committee with us. We were asked by staff what we would like out of our workshop today, when we took a closer look at our academic progress, and we requested longitudinal data be shared with the board specifically around our House Bill III goal areas and early literacy, and we asked that we can learn more as a board about proposed next steps. So I really do hope that you guys got some questions answered and some good dialogue out of our workshop today, and we appreciate staff for putting that together for us. We also requested a presentation to the board about the STAR Assessment ECR rescores and how it is potentially impacting our campus ratings, and I'm really looking forward to learning more about that today, and I appreciate staff for the quick turnaround to give our community and board and staff more information around that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Item B on our reports tonight is a first day of school report, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Smith.
President Chapa, members of the board, we asked our new Chief Schools Officer, Dr. Brett Champion and his amazing team that you see over to his left or right, to give us a quick overview of the beginning of school. We know we have a lot to celebrate in Arlington ISD, and there's great work going on, so Brett's here to provide that this evening.
Board President Chapa, Board Members, and Superintendent Smith, good evening. I'm Brett Champion, Chief Schools Officer, and I'm honored to represent the outstanding educators who comprise Arlington ISD tonight, as I share a teeny-tiny glimpse into the first day of school this year. This six minutes of joy was compiled by our Office of School Leadership Team, all of whom are sitting here with me, and the first day of school is one that falls squarely into two of the board's priorities, clearly in culture and in safety, and safety specifically. This year, the word that we got heard over and over again was "smooth," and that's a win for the first day of school. On August 13, our principals, teachers, and other educators provided a meaningful experience for our students and families as they entered school for the first time this year. Y'all know, there's a special feeling about the first day of school. I equate it to Christmas and birthday, all rolled up into one, and you felt it on all of our campuses. At our elementary schools, you could feel the excitement the moment the kids walked through the doors. A great moment happened at Dunn from a father's group that lined up to welcome students with high fives and fist bumps. At the end of Friday, a kindergartner was walking out and said, "Did you have a great day?" He said, "I had three great days," which is exactly the kind of joy that we're after. From our youngest learners riding for the first time in kindergarten, like here at Piercey STEM Academy, to Mary Moore Elementary, already getting lots of M-practice in pre-K, planning and leadership led to a great first day at our elementary schools. The same is true at our junior highs. Barnett shone with pride and reminded us, just like Rowdy did, that it's football season, y'all. And Nichols students began already leaving their legacy. At our high schools, house sorting at Bridge Camp got students ready for TCC at Arlington Collegiate. Arlington High, per usual, rocked all things green, including dresses and bow ties. CTC and CPVA immersed students in opportunities. Martin High involved all, the entire community, at their first event. And I love this at Seguin Nation, they embraced excellence. You know, we talk all the time about our youngest learners entering school, but it's also the last first day for lots of students. Check out that quote over on the right from that Seguin senior. "It's my last year," and you suddenly notice all the things you didn't notice from all the years you're trying to hurry up through, "but it's real this time. I'm almost done." And he goes on to reference his teachers, his peers... And he goes on to reference his teachers, his peers, making them my last final first day memory in high school. Isn't that cool? Isn't that great? And the first day sets the stage for a great year for our staffs, for our staffs like these at Amos. But also, I'd be remiss not to mention the people behind the scenes. IT folks, district office staff, board members, custodians, bus drivers, facilities crews, and food service community, like here at Venture. These folks showed up for our students, y'all. Kelly will appreciate this, we didn't even have a major air conditioning incident on the first day of school this year. We also celebrate our families like these watchdogs. Friends, Arlington ISD's first day was a super feeling for everyone. Thank you, Board, for your continued support of our students, teachers, principals, and staff as we all work to make Arlington ISD the best it can be. Like they say at Seguin Nation, Arlington ISD is a culture, not a title. We're striving for excellence in every role, every person, every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Champion. Are there any comments or questions from trustees? All right, seeing none. We'll move on. Dr. Smith?
I do have to say, I almost bet Brett earlier that he couldn't get through those slides in 10 minutes or so, and he did. And I'm really amazed at that, but I'm really grateful for Brett and our Executive Directors of School Leadership and all of our principals for the wonderful first day of school. I had many principals say it was the smoothest they've ever had, and it's because of the leadership that they all show. So thank you all for what you do every day.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. I can tell you from the board end, at least from my perspective, now this has been my seventh or eighth first day, and it really has been the smoothest and quietest from my perspective in terms of what we get feedback on. All right, on to item C. It is our Internal Audit Annual Report, and I will turn it back over to Dr. Smith and the Internal Audit Team.
Alexis, you can come on up. Alexis Palacios, our interim chief, is our interim chief internal auditor, and she's here to provide y'all an update on work that they did over the last year. And then she'll be back in the near future to talk about work for the upcoming year.
Good evening, President Chapa, members of the board, and Dr. Smith. Today is a new start for many things for internal audit, and I'm very proud to be here in front of y'all today and have the opportunity to do this. We're here today to present to you an overview of internal audit's work for the fiscal year 2425. We support all the board priorities when it comes to our work and what we do. Our primary goal is to strengthen governance, risk, and internal controls. Our work is performed from an objective lens to provide that assurance to all our stakeholders that not only includes the board, our students, our parents, our executive staff, everybody within our district, all our stakeholders. We also promote transparency, accountability, and responsible stewardship. I thought this was a great opportunity to recognize my team. I wanted to point out that three of the five of us are graduates of Arlington ISD, and that gives us a lot of, gives us a lot of pride. It gives us a lot of passion about what we do and why we do it. Because I don't think, I know when I was going to school, I didn't realize what all goes in to supporting a single campus or even a single student. So two of us are Lamar Hart graduates, and one is Arlington High. She wasn't able to be here today. But I also wanted to give honorable mention to Sanita Topper. She, her, although she didn't graduate from here, she, her and her husband chose to live in Arlington ISD and raise their kids in Arlington ISD. They went through the Martin Cluster. One just graduated college, and the other one just started his second year at TCU. And they're on to, projected to become a lawyer and a doctor. But I also wanted to recognize our team. Since March 2024, we've gone through a lot of challenges, and with that comes a lot of uncertainty. So I wrote my little statement down for them because I wanted to get it right for them. My staff has embraced with resilience, professionalism, and a shared commitment to shaping not just our vision and goals, but the district's vision and goals for the future. From day one, they have been on board, ready to adapt, ready to grow, and ready to support the district with integrity. So this past year, we performed 29 insurance engagements, and to our, we're currently in progress and finishing up and wrapping up for fiscal year '25. We've had five consulting engagements that were, those are those requests that come in as special requests that weren't originally on the audit plan. We also managed the fraud, waste, and abuse hotline, and we've conducted five individually. 10 we have done in conjunction with senior leadership, and 12 collaborative investigations with not just senior leadership, but it could include any various area of our district. And then we've also had four audit requests. Our goal is to complete 85% of the audit plan, and this year we've been able to complete 84%. Of our hotline submissions, our goal is to have those done within 30 days. And I don't know why I'm showing the numbers, but the ones that internal audit has investigated alone were averaging about a 21-day turnaround from open to close. Those that we have done collaboratively, we are averaging about 38.5 days. And this last year, we just implemented a new hotline system, so I'm hoping to see progression in reducing that start-to-finish timeline in investigating hotline submissions. Our goal is, as any other department, is to stay 100% staff. But since we are in transition right now, we have one vacant position, which is the manager position. Together, we have collectively 58 years of audit experience and 62 combined in Arlington ISD. Our department budget was approved for $166,000 and got amended to $108,000, and we expensed about $102,000. Most of our budget is for professional development, general supplies, and audit services that we do have to go out and contract externally. Our goal is to have 40 hours of professional development per employee. This year, we were up to 87 because our audit committee readily lit a fire, including Dr. Smith, to promote our growth and to challenge us. And it just, I really was glad that our staff got that opportunity to do that because we really didn't have that opportunity in the past. So I want to thank all the board members and Dr. Smiths for that opportunity. So we all, in this last year, we all got our TASBO certifications, and some of us are working on to get other certifications to be able to better, to add that value to the district. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Palacios. Do we have any comments or questions from trustees? Mr. Wilbanks.
Thank you, President Chapa. It's been a joy working with you guys, and I really like that you guys have stretched yourselves in your professional development and with the eye to providing value back to the district. And I don't want to speak for the rest of my audit committee team, but I think they shared that wholeheartedly with me. And so thank you for the work that you've done. Looking back at the past with the audits that we've completed, are there any themes and areas where you think the district is doing really well or areas where we need to do improvement that we could tighten controls and minimize the risk to the district based on the audits you completed this last year?
No, I think our district is doing a great job of managing risk. I've seen a lot of growth in, you know, one of our goals is building culture. I think that's helped a lot in managing our own risk and stuff like that. So I think our biggest, or not our biggest, but a concern going in for this year was activity funds. This year, we implemented a new scorecard for the campuses instead of just providing a worded report because I think principals and the staff at the campus resonate more with a report, a report card type scoring versus just us putting a 10, 20-page report in front of them. And I think they've really enjoyed that from us. So we've just had a couple of problem areas in there with sales, tax, and fundraising. But we are actively working closely with finance area to provide additional training. We've actually had campuses request that we come out and do a joint training with them with accounting, the accounting staff, and internal audit because it's very important for them to understand why these procedures are in place. And I think once they understand that and get a grasp of it, that it's just, it's going to click. And so I think we are going to make progress this year moving forward.
Great. Thank you, Alexis, and thank you to the team. We really appreciate the value you bring to the district.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbanks. Ms. Richardson.
You just touched on it just a little bit, but talking about when you're going on to these campuses and training them, and they are requesting more training, and how many campuses that we have heard from that have said they didn't know what they didn't know. They had just, it wasn't that they were doing it wrong on purpose. It's not, they truly had not been trained properly. You went in and haven't just been the bad guy looking to catch on the gotcha, which I appreciate. Instead, you went in with the same teaching and education mentality that we want our teachers and we do from the top down. From the way Dr. Smith teaches us and explains things with us, you go onto campuses and say, "We don't want to catch you doing something. Instead, we want to teach you how to do it and do best practices." And you're doing it, and you make them feel good. I have gotten to hear from several campuses who walked away saying, "Not only do I get it now, I want to keep doing it right, and I want to know what else I can learn from them." So thank you for making this a priority. One of the things I really like that we saw on one of the slides, Slide 9, was looking at the average professional development per employee and average hours that you were supposed to be doing is about 40 hours, and you guys are at 80. You guys are doing the work on yourselves. And on top of a really full schedule that you do here already at the district, that you are growing and evolving in your own department, I appreciate it because we talk about having, asking our teachers to grow, asking our administrators to grow. Y'all are doing that in your own department, so thank you for taking the lead. I am so happy to get to watch you guys grow and thrive in this role. Also, how cool is it that y'all are graduates, several of you?
It's amazing.
That right there, homegrown people that we get to plug back in. So thank you for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Are there any other trustees with comments or questions tonight? All right. Ms. Palacios, thank you and your team so much. I know that I have spent a couple of years on audit, and I just know how much work that y'all do, how much you have professionalized the role over the last few years, and how much work you do behind the scenes. The fraud, waste, and abuse reports that come in, I think sometimes folks don't know what goes into that and just what comes in the door there. And sometimes they're hyper-specific complaints, and it's kind of easy to get a start. And sometimes it's really vague, but you guys investigate all of them very diligently, and we appreciate that. Also, thank you to our audit committee, which for the last two years has been chaired by Mr. Wilbanks and also Mr. Mike and Ms. Richardson serving on that committee as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our last report for the evening is a report on the STAR EOC rescores, and I'll turn it back over to Dr. Smith.
President Chapa and members of the board, as Ms. McMurro mentioned earlier this evening, this was a topic at one of our committee meetings recently. You all have heard me speak of this at the state of the district and in other locations about our rescore efforts and the situation we were in. And Dr. Lopez is here tonight to give you all some very specific details about it, where we are, next steps.
President Chapa, members of the board, and Dr. Smith, thank you for the time. I'll be providing the update on the results of our rescore submission, also explaining that submission process and then some issues that we encountered. I'm going to share our response to that and then discuss the projected impact of those rescore results on accountability ratings. So start with the process. What we did for our rescore submission back in June was, although we wanted to, would love to send in all, that would have cost roughly $1.5 million for the district, on the district side. So we were strategic by identifying assessments for rescore based on their proximity to the next performance level, with those that were within two items prioritized for submission. For our STAR EOC English I and English II, we were able to identify 1,131 tests and submitted those on June 11th. And then for our STAR 3 through 8 reading tests, we were identified 3,239 assessments and submitted those on June 17th. District total there was 4,370 tests that we identified just reading that we submitted to the state to have rescored from the AI. We have submitted those to be rescored by humans. Got the submission in on time. And so following both those rescore submissions, here's our verification. We received confirmation that our rescore request forms were processed successfully. It's just our general practice and RNA, just kind of documentation of these types of processes. So uploaded, we took a screenshot that, okay, great. We just received confirmation that the file that we just uploaded was processed successfully. Went back into the next history page, and you can see there that second screenshot from Cambium's portal shows that the status of our documents were processed. And the dates there confirm what was on the last page, June 11th and June 17th. After going back in, kind of a couple of weeks later, thinking, "Okay, we're going to see the results of those rescores." We weren't able to find the submission on the appeals record page, a different page within the Cambium system. That didn't feel good. We reached out immediately to Cambium and asked, "Where is the appeals record of the rescores that we processed or that we uploaded and that we show are processed?" And after some back and forth with Cambium, we were given the unfortunate news that something happened on the back end of the Cambium system. Still unsure what that was, and that our rescore results were not, didn't make it all the way through, is the wording that was used. So TEA did not rescore the 4,370 results on June 11th, and then the 3 through 8 on June 17th, because they did not get them. Again, some back and forth with Cambium. We were connected with Kevin Malindukala, the Director of Assessment for TEA. He was very responsive. Once he discovered what happened with their vendor and our files, got on a phone call with us and was very helpful, responsive, transparent as well. And he just let us know, "Hey, this is really a very bizarre and unfortunate thing that has happened to Arlington ISD, to the campuses, and to the students. We're going to expedite this rescore for y'all," which he did, which TEA did expedite the rescore. But he was very transparent and said, "Unfortunately, even though we're going to expedite this for you, these results are not going to make it in time for the August 15th rating released to the public." He did give guidance that although they weren't going to make it on to the August 15th ratings to impact the positive, the campuses positively, that we could file an appeal in order to have those rescores included, to have that rating updated from what they originally published on August 15th to the new appropriate score for what it should be. And I'll talk more about that here in a moment. So I'm going to go on to rescore results now because, like I said, we did receive the rescore results back in a pretty timely fashion, once they discovered the error on their part. Overall, results showed growth in raw and scale scores as well as by performance level. This is just a breakdown of those 4,370 by level, by school level. So our elementary results, we had 18% increase with their raw and their scale score, and 12.5 of those increasing to the next performance level. So going from did not meet, not passing the test, to approaches, or going from approaches to the meets level, or meets to masters. At the junior high, astonishing 36.2% of the tests had a raw score or a scale score increase, 22.2% of which resulted in a performance level increase. And then at the high school level, 15.4% of a scale score on raw score increase, and then 10.2% performance level increases. So the district overall, 21% of our tests had some sort of increase, and 14% resulted in a performance level change. And this slide gives that exact same kind of breakdown of results. Instead of by level here, though, it shows by grade. So third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, all the way through English I and English II. Just kind of, I mean, eighth grade, wow, our submissions, 42.4% of them had a change. 28.1% resulting in a performance level increase. And then followed by third grade, 18.6% of the tests that we submitted had a performance level increase. And then a quarter had an increase in the scale score or raw score. So talking numbers specifically, not just the percentages, but changes in the performance level due to those rescore are shown in this table below. So what you can see is 1,336 scores that were high did not meet. They might have increased. They might have increased, but they stayed at the high did not meet. 143 tests went from did not meet to approaches and that's that blue value there, that first, first row of values. And then we had 236 go from approaches to meets grade level. And then 237 scores go from meeting grade level to mastering grade level because of the rescore. So, what we know about the A to F system is that the primary ingredient are those STAR tests. And so, for a campus rating, it's heavily dependent on the STAR and the EOC. So, once we incorporated those rescore results to the actual accountability ratings, we had quite an impact. And so, marked improvement in assessment led to gains in projected accountability ratings. This is now based on final accountability ratings identified through those updated scores. Initially, we showed that we had six As, 22 Bs, 19 Cs, 15 Ds and nine Fs. And then with the, with the results of the rescore, we now have eight As, 21 Bs, 19 Cs, 15 Ds and eight Fs. And the forced actually comes into play on that, but that's a different presentation for a different time. So, the following campuses saw increased accountability letter grade projections due to the rescore results and we will be filing an appeal for these five campuses. So, Owlsley Junior High, initial overall August 15th release, 89. Their rescore, had that been incorporated, they would have been a 90 and their rescore grade would have been an A. They went from a B to an A. Duff Elementary, initial August 15th, 89. With those rescore results, they're a 90 and we will be appealing that and asking for their A. Hill Elementary was published as a 79, but they actually were an 80 and went from a C to a B. Peach Elementary was a 69 with those August 15th ratings. And that was a, I believe, forced and they actually came up to a 71, two points in their overall score. They went from a D to a C with those rescore results. Berry Elementary was forced and a forced F, but with the rescore results, they were a 61. So, they came off of the F list and they're actually a D. And then after further analysis literally done this week, Arlington High School is actually also increased by, by a letter grade. They didn't make it to this presentation, but wanted to share that news. So, they should have been on this list, so. So, not only did we have letter grade increases, and again, we will be submitting an appeal for that data to be accurately reflected for those campuses. We had 13 campuses that grew in their Domain 1 score because of these rescores. 24 campuses grew in Domain 2A. 15 campuses grew in 2B. 19 campuses grew in Domain 3. 21, which is 30% of our campuses grew overall because of the rescore results. And then we have here that five changed by a letter grade, update that to six based on, you know, further analysis and what we've calculated this week. So, brings us to the end of our presentation, so I'll open that up to the discussion section.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Lopez. Ms. Richardson.
Thank you for the presentation because I think right now, when we read the news headlines that are given, and that's what we often see and that is what our community reads is Arlington is rated this many schools as an F, as a D, as a, to know that because of AI and the way it was scored, that those headlines that people are reading is wrong. It is inaccurate. And the problem and the fear that I have as a trustee is that when these headlines go out and they read them August 15th, is, are they going to get the same attention when we come back and we share the rescores? When we say, actually, this is what the campus has been rated? Or is that narrative already out there? My concern is that when people are looking to buy homes and areas, they look at these grades. They say, you're, there's a big difference in an F and a D to a parent when they're rating, a C and a D even. And so, some people may look at this and say, well, you only went up one point, you only went up two. But when it changes a full letter grade, when you are going from a forced F to a D, that's a big deal, especially the state of our government right now with education, when they are looking at reasons to come into our schools. We don't need to have mistakes like this that aren't because of the staff. It's not because of what the teachers taught. It's not even our kids who did poorly. It is truly because AI graded their test wrong. And then to know that we would have to have paid over a million dollars to have it all rescored, this does not make sense to me. It's not logical to have to pay to get your correct grade. We're in education. Where did this ever come from? And my frustration is not with you and is not with your team. It is with a system that is broken and it says, if you want your correct grade to really see how your kids do, then you need to pay us. That's not okay.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Ms. Fowler.
President Chapa, going to kind of piggyback off what Ms. Richardson said. I'm angry and it takes a lot to get me angry, but this has angered me. And the fact that AI graded it incorrectly, they admitted that they know they were graded incorrectly. They want to charge us to go back and change what they messed up on. I'm mad at TEA and I'm mad at the commissioner and they refuse to correct it. They'll say, yes, you, we made a mistake, but we're not going to fix it. To me, that's like you go to a bank, you deposit money, you look the next day and the money's not in your account. So, you contact the bank and you say, hey, I've deposited this money and it's not there. Oh, you're right. We put that in somebody else's account. Well, are you going to move it? No, it's going to stay in their account. To me, that's the same kind of thing. And I think about how hard our students worked and our teachers have worked to be slapped in the face, that they're not going to do anything to make up for the heartbreak that these students and teachers have felt. And TEA has done a lot of crazy things, but I think this is probably one of the craziest. And it's really appalling. It's absolutely appalling that this has happened. They're charging us to go back and fix their mistakes and it's just wrong. And I feel bad for our students and our teachers. This does not reflect what AI SD is all about. We're better than this, but what do you do when you have TEA and the commissioner fighting against you? Instead of agreeing to help and making us look better, it's like they want us to look bad and it's not fair and it's not right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Ms. McMurro.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez. Did, did this keep high school students from graduating?
No, ma'am. Kevin at TEA was very helpful and, and very responsive and understood because we were, we communicated, our main concern is the students and that's our priority, is making sure that this accurately reflects student mastery. And then that needs to be reflected accurately because there are basically consequences if it's not reflected accurately, it impacts graduation. We, we've got to have this back. We did receive the results back and before our August graduation.
Very good. That's good to hear because as disappointed as we are about ratings and all that, I, I do feel confident that my colleagues can agree, there is a student behind all of these tests. There's a, there's a person. And ratings are disappointing and when we see Owlsley, Duff, Hill, Peach, Berry and now Arlington High, we know those are all great schools, but it's an extra layer of, of frustration and it's very disheartening to know that there are students behind all of these essays. And just in quick summary, for anyone who's kind of trying to wrap their brain around this, artificial intelligence scores, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Lopez, but it scores every English language ECR from grades three all the way up to high school English 2. And there is oversight, but you're not going to typically get a human score unless a school district submits the essays on their own time. And we know most of our school districts in Texas are rural. They don't have the manpower to be able to do that. We're fortunate to be able to have you and your team and some of the means to submit this for rescore. But just of the ones we submitted for rescore, we had about 25% that were inaccurate. Is that correct?
Yeah, for the district, 21%. And, and you have a week, I want to add on, you have one week from when you get those results to submit the ones that you would like to be rescored. We have 31,000 roughly reading assessments. So, the, you'd have to have a very large team reading 31,000 essays to determine which ones to submit.
And we don't have $1.5 million to have the state double check the viability of their own assessment. So, I'm thinking about this legislatively. When we come up with our next legislative agenda for the next called special session, I really hope that we can draw our delegation's attention to this because this is not working. It's not working and there is a person behind all of these mis-scored assessments. We want kids to love writing and this, this is, this isn't it. So, I do appreciate your transparency. I know it must have been a tough call for staff to put school names up there, but each one of these schools is a great school. And we know the wonderful things happening in each of these buildings and it, it just really makes it real to us because we know that each school is a community and we know that each writer who took this test is a person, a kid who's learning and trying to do their best and graduate. So, thank you, Dr. Lopez.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Mr. Mike.
You know, the one thing that sticks out to me is the fact that there's only about 4,000 or so that was sent in and we have such a drastic change in scores. What would have happened if we sent in every single test? Would our scores just increase exponentially? The way that the trend is going, it looks like it. And so, it brings me back to this accountability aspect. The state expects the district to be accountable, but they are not accountable in their assessment. And so, how are we to trust the scores that are out there right now? How are we to trust anything that comes out? I mean, when you talk about using AI, you dare not use AI in the courtroom because it'll give you some wrong information, but they're using it to assess our children. And you know, if we're talking about legislatively, we have four state senators that represent Arlington. We've got four state House reps that represent Arlington, three county commissioners, four congressional districts. So, I think if any of their staff watches this, maybe they need to put this on a special agenda and fix it to where we're not using AI that we know is wrong, that is impacting our schools and it's impacting our cities, it's impacting our communities. And yes, I'm going on a rant right now. But for them to say that education is failing, you can't say that when you're not assessing us properly. And, and that's the big issue that I have here. I mean, our hands are tied on what they send down to us. And, and another problem is that we're having to pay for this. We're having to pay for their mistakes. And, and that, that should upset any taxpayer in Arlington and across the state itself. Like, we have to pay for the mistakes that were put in place that I don't even think there was a legislative agenda that said, hey, AI is going to start scoring. It was just an arbitrary decision that was pushed down and mandated through T. So, if we have folks watching, if, if you want to be upset, there is, there's a place to be upset at and it's not us, something's got to change. I think, I think we need to push this hard.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. Okay. I have just one question and then a couple of comments. Dr. Lopez, I noticed on sort of the raw data that we got, that Sam Houston High School, I think is sitting at a 69. I noticed it didn't make this list. Do we not expect them to, with the volume that we submitted, we don't expect them to move up the point?
Unfortunately, no, we're not. We don't show an increase. Very large population, so it takes a large number to move when you have a larger denominator. And so, while there was improvement, again, with the limitation on how many we can submit, it just, unfortunately, no, they did not.
Okay. Good luck for them to get off the, the list there. My comments are not unique. They've, they've sort of been echoed. I just want to put them in a little bit of context on something that I've harped on before. And you know, Ms. Fowler mentioned that she kind of thinks that some of this is designed to make us look bad and I've said that before. Mr. Mike said it goes to like, what is the quality assessment system that we have? And, and it's not in your presentation, but it is in the, there's a chart that's in the email that went out to parents and it's on our, it's on the news story that we have on our webpage on this. And I just want to, we, we've seen it here before, but I just want to pull it, I'm going to pull it up here so I can refer to it. But just to give some perspective on, on how this has evolved, because we've been talking about accountability in A through F and STAR scores for a long time. And you know, there was this sense of like, well, the goalposts got moved with the 2023 redesign. They called it at first a refresh, but it's become very clear that it was much more than a refresh. And just to give some perspective on that, you know, 2022 was, was the last year and we were, under the old system and we were doing very well under that system. In, in 2022, only 6% of our campuses, according to this chart, got below a C, just 6%. The 2023 results were held up in court for a couple of years, but when they were released, you know, the story was, well, the schools don't want them to be released because it's going to, you know, they don't like real accountability. We do like and we're happy to meet accountability that is fair. And you know, you do research and account, like you have a doctorate in the, in the nitty gritty of this. And just as a statistician, you know that a valid assessment should not be seeing, and especially in a large system, should not see big swings from year on year. And between 2022 and 2023, we went from having 6% of our campuses get below a C to 50% in one year. There's no possible way in a system like ours that we suddenly became a failing school district at that magnitude in one year. But that's what we're being judged by and this system is extremely punitive. And these errors of this, especially of this magnitude, they matter. Our neighbor to the west, Fort Worth, I esteem, is potentially facing a state takeover on the basis of scores for one campus. And so, it is frustrating and I, we have talked about this over and over again, but it is so frustrating that so much rides on this test for our city, for our community, for our students, for our schools, for our teachers who work under the pressure of this testing system. And one of the slides you put up showed it was a 42% increase in scores for one category that we resubmitted. That should not be happening in a, in an assessment system that is valid and fair. And so, I know that the legislature is meeting right now and things keep getting added to the special session agenda and one of them supposedly is redoing STAR. But it's really not just STAR. Like, just, just changing the name of the test isn't going to fix things. Going from one big test to three tests isn't going to change things. The real issue is the way that the testing is done and how it is used to judge us and that's the accountability system. So, to Mr. Mike's point, I hope that folks don't just look at the test, the accountability system as a whole really needs to be rethought. And until that's done, just changing the name of the test or the number of them that we take, that's, that's not helping the real issue. The real issue is that we have a flawed accountability system that is punitive, that, and we could, you know, you've mentioned for a whole nother meeting, we could have a whole nother meeting on the correlation between these types of tests and the types of students that we serve and how that has been persistent, community upon community for a very long time. That's a whole nother subject. But until the accountability system gets fixed, we're going to continue to have these types of frustrations with the state. And the minimum that they can do is at least get the grading right the first go-round and not use a system like this AI system, which I could just have an anecdotal story that was super frustrating to me last year, but it's the position, position that we're in. I have an eighth grader, she's eighth grade now, and she took the seventh grade writing test last year. And, and I, you know, she's my kid, so I'm a little biased, but I think she's a pretty good writer. And she was getting all As in her, her, her class. When it came time to get ready for the writing portion of the STAR, though, they started doing mock essays and the teacher would run them through a AI scoring system that was supposed to approximate how these essays would be graded. And my daughter's scores started out low, even though I think subjectively, it was good responses to the prompts that were given. But what the teacher worked with my daughter on was changing the way that she writes to get a higher score from an AI grader, even if subjectively, it was a less nuanced, less, I'm not even saying this correctly, less well-written essay. So, not only do we have a flawed scoring system, we're teaching our kids to do things that are actually suboptimal for them educationally to get a right score on this system. are actually suboptimal for them educationally to get a right score on this system. And that is really offensive to me as both a parent and a former educator. So those are my comments on this. I'll turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Trustees, I wanted to make a couple of quick points, and then I want to wrap up and thank Natalie and her team a little bit for the work that they continue to do and let you know what's going on. The first point that I would like to make is I do want to acknowledge, even though I have frustrations, and you'll hear a little bit about my frustrations in a minute, when we notified TEA, they responded. And when we notified them that a mistake was made on their side, I received a call from the commissioner, and we talked about that, and they did hurry those assessments to make sure that our students weren't negatively impacted by summer graduation. And so I want to acknowledge when, you know, acknowledgement is due, that they did respond right away to help us with some issues right off the bat. The second piece that I wanted to build off of is what Ms. Richardson said about the broken system, and it's something that Mr. Mike referenced as well. We have a challenge in front of us right now because at the legislature earlier today in the House Public Education Committee, they were talking about some of these things, and they were talking about the change potentially to the STAR test. In the things that they were talking about this morning, the commissioner shared with one of the members on the House Pub Ed Committee when he asked, his question was, how many, what percent of tests are actually submitted to you all to be rescored? And he said, it's really small, it's about 3%. And I want to point out, and I made sure to point out to one of those legislators on that committee, that it's really important to think about why it's only 3%. Because as Dr. Lopez mentioned earlier, there is only a week between when we receive those scores and when we actually have to submit for a rescore. And so, Dr. Lopez, what was the total amount of tests that we had that you said 30,000?
I think it's 31,748.
So that's pretty awesome that you knew that. So if you think about 30,000 tests, that we have a week to decide whether or not we're submitting them for a rescore. And then the fact that we are charged for any that don't actually have an improvement in all of that. So by this system that is broken, we are actually dissuading school districts from submitting rescores. And I'm not saying that we submit every one of them, but when we know we have a flawed system, we absolutely would like to be submitting more. And so this situation that we're in, we have a broken system, and yet the way it's talked about at the legislature right now, when asked directly, it's, oh, it's only, there's only a small percentage of districts that are actually doing this, that are submitting rescores. It's not that big of a deal. It's not that big of a deal because, one, they probably don't have the manpower to do it, and, two, they don't have the budget to do it, and the turnaround timeline is extremely unrealistic. And so I share that with you, and again, I want to give TEA credit where credit is due when we let them know, thanks to the leadership of Dr. Lopez and her team, that we saw a flaw on their end of the rescoring system for Arlington ISD. They responded, they got them back, in their words, as quick as they could to us, and we appreciate that. But the root of all of this is a broken system to start with, and it is impacting Arlington ISD, our schools, our ratings, and, most importantly, our student performance. And again, to Ms. McMurro's point, there is a face behind every one of those scores. I do want to acknowledge Dr. Lopez and her team. Right now, they are working through all of this information because our next step is that we have to submit documentation for an appeal for those schools that she talked about. And that is not a small lift, that is a really big lift because the guidance that we have from the state is that it pretty much has to be perfect, and we have to have every piece of documentation in, in order for them to actually even consider it. And so right now, Natalie and her team are working day in and day out, making sure we have all the appropriate data, all the appropriate charts, that they're easy to read, and that we're 100% accurate on everything that we intend to submit. The submission deadline for the, excuse me, the appeal is September the 12th, and the commissioner pointed that out to every one of the superintendents across the state today on our commissioner call. But I'm proud to say and thankful for the work that Natalie and her team are doing because they're going to have us ready for that, and it's important work for our students.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from trustees? Mr. Mike?
Just real quick, you didn't talk about it, but we would not even be in this position if you guys hadn't taken screenshots and saved it because of the additional flaw from the state. Like, it's just flaw upon flaw upon flaw, like, consistently.
I'm really grateful that we do those types of things. We just, we build them into our projects. It's probably why the team is inherently just thorough and good at record-keeping. And so, yes, I'm very grateful that we have that evidence. Yeah.
Yeah, it's evident.
Keep your receipts.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Lopez. That concludes the report portion of our agenda tonight. We'll move on to our action portion. We only have one item on the agenda for action tonight, and that is to consider the approval of an agreement to purchase attendance credit option three and to delegate contractual authority to the superintendent. I will turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Trustees, I would like to invite Mr. No Bertha Rivas up. He is our interim chief financial officer, and he will walk you through real quickly why we have to do this. This is, again, one of those things from the state that is a frustrating thing, but it is something that's necessary for us to do on an annual basis.
Good evening, Board President Chapa, Board members, and Superintendent Dr. Smith. Local access revenue, what is it? Here attached, you see the actual letter we received from TA on July 15th of 2025. This is an annual thing that Arlington ISD has to do. There's five options available for recapture. If you read four of them, one, two, four, and five, you can consolidate with another district, you can detach it, territory, you can educate non-resident students, or you can have your tax-based consolidation with another district. Those are very, very difficult to do legally, so most districts, if not all districts, I believe, opt in for option three, which is buying average daily attendance credit. So here's just a timeline of the way recapture works. We were notified on July 15th, and then we have through the end of this month, September 1st, to both submit our intent and to submit an agreement, which is what tonight's action item is going to be. By January, we're able to submit what we paid the appraisal district because we do get a percentage of that back, which is proportioned to the recapture amount. And then by September of next year is when we'll actually know what the near final recapture amount will be. So next month, we'll know what the near final amount would be for the agreement that was approved last year. Here's a slide, it's a matrix that kind of shows the way recapture works. Our M&amp;O rate is divided upon, it's split into three portions. The largest portion is determined by TA. This is widely known as the MCR rate. When the state buys down property tax values, they do it by reducing this MCR rate. And then there's two more portions, eight pennies, which are gold, and then nine pennies, which are copper. School districts have the option to levy the first five golden pennies, but to get to the next three, and then the following nine copper pennies, you need voter approval, which Arlington ISD received a few years back. So each portion of that tax rate funds different things. So there's three funding levels. There's tier one, which is the basic funding, and then there's two levels into tier two. This is considered supplemental funding. So the way to look at these formulas is thinking of it's on a per-student, per-similar effort, and that's how you get your similar revenues, right? So there's formulas that determine what the entitlement is. So tier one, the target there for 2024-25 is the basic allotment. It pulls the basic allotment, it pulls your students, their demographics, and it calculates how much your local tax base generated, times all those demographics, and that is what you're entitled to. That is how big your cup of funding is. So then the next two columns show the local collection and the state aid. If your local collection exceeds that entitlement, you're subject to recapture on level one. Arlington ISD is not subject to recapture on level one. We did generate about $174 million in state aid. The next level is golden pennies. It's the same concept, except here you're looking at yields, copper penny yields and golden penny yields. Golden pennies are called golden because they are not subject to recapture, so depending on your ISD and your funding and your characteristics, some districts stay in the golden, and they don't levy the additional copper pennies because they don't want to pay the recapture. So for that level of funding, it is not subject to recapture, and our local collections came in at about 29 million, and we generated about 37 million in state aid in that level. The final level is the copper level, and this is the part where we were subject to recapture, and we have been subject to recapture for a few years. So we were entitled, based on the calculation, to come in at about $28 million, but we came, we actually generated about $33 million for a difference of about $4 million. On the right-hand side of this slide, you'll see what that history has been for the last few years. So in 2021 and 2122, we actually generated a little bit of state aid because we were under that entitlement target. But as values go up, we went the other way, and we started paying into recapture. A couple of years ago, and for fiscal year '23, the state was, collected about $4.5 billion in recapture, and then that's when the home sit exemption was at $40,000. The following year, it went up to $100,000, and that actually reduced how much the state gained in recapture from about $4.5 billion to $2.7 billion. So that's why there's a note on the side, because they increased the home sit exemption again for this upcoming year from $100 to $140,000. Our recapture amount won't be the $8 million that we budgeted at the beginning of the year before the session was over. That recapture amount should come in a little bit lower, at about the $4 million mark, between $4 and $4.5 million. But there'll be more information on this once I have the actual tax roll in October, once the tax rate is adopted, and then, once we actually start seeing the collections and then the number of students, because it is based on a per-student basis. With that said, this is a recommendation. Administration recommends approval of the agreement for the purchase of attendance credit and the delegation of the authority to obligate the school district under Chapter 49 to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Rivas. Are there trustees with comments or questions? Seeing none, I believe Ms. Haynes has a motion.
Yes, thank you. I move that for the 2025-2026 school year, we delegate contractual authority to obligate the school district under Texas Education Code 11.1511 to the superintendent solely for the purpose of obligating the district under TEC 48.257 and TEC Chapter 49, Subchapters A and D, and the rules adopted by the Commissioner of Education as authorized under TEC 49.006. This includes approval of the agreement for purchase of attendance credit, netting Chapter 48 funding.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I'm going to give that one to Mr. Mike. We'll now move to vote. All trustees voting in the affirmative, the motion unanimously carries. Thank you, Mr. Rivas. We'll now move on to the consent agenda portion of our evening tonight. Are there any trustees who would like to withdraw an item from consent agenda? Seeing none, we will move to vote on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Have a motion from Mr. Will Banks? Do I have a second?
A second.
Have a second from Ms. Fowler. Trustees will move to vote on consent. All trustees voting in the affirmative, the consent agenda carries unanimously. All right. We'll move on to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Acosta, do we have speakers registered for non-agenda tonight?
President Chapa, yes, we do. We have three.
All right. All right. We have, is Kevin Barlow present?
No.
Okay. We'll move on to our next speaker, Eric Cryle. Mr. Cryle. Mr. Cryle, you know the rules, and welcome back. You'll have three minutes.
President Chapa, Board, Senator Smith, good evening. I'm here to talk about the only thing I ever come here to talk about. As you know, I was on the TAD ballot last year, and as they say, if at first you don't succeed, try again. So this is me trying again. Only this time, things are a little different. There are fewer board positions open, and there are new tax entities participating. This year, there will be two open positions. Arlington will have 160 votes to allocate. Your process to nominate and elect will start soon. As mentioned, new entities are participating this year. The conservation districts of Tarrant County chose to participate. There are six of them. This is the first time they have ever participated, and they're still getting their feet under them to understand it. Why did they choose to participate? After reading parts of the tax code earlier this year, I discovered conservation districts could participate, but it wasn't automatic like schools and cities. So in February, I started speaking to them, and after many speaking engagements and emails, they chose to act. My reason for attempting to get them involved was simple. I believe the more entities involved, the greater the transparency of the district and as elected officials, if you can vote, I believe you should. Their process is a little different. In fact, they just finished their nominating period for the fall ballot, and they selected me as their nominee. So with that being said, now that it's budget season, in your email, you should all have a packet that I prepared. I've added my commentary to it and would be happy to answer any questions. But to briefly go through the packet, it only focuses on residential values taken from TAD's Total Value Report of July '24 and '25. If you notice on pages two and three, market and average annual home values are down. When market values are frozen, with the reappraisal plan, you'd expect them to stay the same. So the question is, why aren't they? And the answer is the protests. The protests went up this year 8% from 208,000 to 228,000. And according to the chief appraiser, those that protested their values saw, on average, a reduction of 10%. So what does that tell us? It tells us much of Tarrant County is experiencing declining property values. If you remember, the purported reason of the freeze was to provide taxpayer relief. However, with the values frozen, homeowners did not receive the benefit of reduced values unless they protested. So your taxpayers are going to end up paying taxes on overvalued property. If we were on yearly appraisals, most homeowners would have received the benefit of reduced home value. When the time comes, this board will have to vote for individuals you believe will best represent the interests of you and your taxpayers. In essence, what TAD did with the freeze was to insert itself as an attempt to control your budget, when in fact, it's the other way around. As a tax entity, you control TAD's budget. TAD does not set a tax rate there, funded by you. Your budget is between you and your taxpayers, not you and TAD. With the current market realities, the fact is, much of Tarrant County has declined in value. With that said, tax relief is not the responsibility of TAD. They're here to value property. You're here to run a school district and set a tax rate based on the value. Yearly appraisals would ensure the most accurate data to achieve that outcome. When it comes time to vote, I'd appreciate the consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Cryle. And I note that you provided an electronic handout and asked me to provide it to the board, and I did.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have one speaker left on our non-agenda portion tonight, and that speaker is Luciano Varela from Beats for Good. All right. Welcome back. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Good evening. My name is Luciano Varela. I'm the senior relationship manager at National Life Group, one of Arlington ISD's 43B retirement providers. Tonight, I'm here to talk about Beats for Good. To remind some of you, Beats for Good is National Life Group's high school music competition. The competition opens up this Monday, the 25th, and runs to September 14th. And not only do we want submissions from every official public school program, choirs, orchestras, jazz, mariachi, but we also want submissions from the students who have passion for music but aren't able to participate due to responsibilities like after-school jobs or taking care of siblings. We are going to have an internal panel of judges select the top 10 acts, open those acts to public voting, and then we'll have three finalists. Third place will receive $1,000 to go to their music program. Second place will receive $2,500 to go to their music program. And first place will receive $5,000 to their music program, plus $1,500 cash prize to the solo or group act. Last year, we had Arlington ISD's alum Mason Moore. Mason Moore be the grand prize winner and performed at last year's concert. It was great. Where's the camera? There you are. This year, the winner will also open up at our Do Good Fest.
Yeah, so we're really excited about this year's festival taking place again at the Levitt Pavilion, beautiful venue, as I'm sure we all know. And it's going to be benefiting the Tarrant Area Food Bank specifically, their Ready to Learn Kids programs, which, incredible programs. And we have, it's real '90s throwback this year, collective soul, fastball, and tonic, so it's going to be very nostalgic, very fun, and again, it's just a great way to get these really talented kids in front of what's going to be, I think, a sold-out crowd, probably 6,000 people. probably 6,000 people, give back to their music programs, and just keep making that investment in these amazing programs that make such a difference for for kids' lives. So...
One minute. So, last year's third place was Arlington, Sam Houston's mariachi band, and the first place was Mason Moore from Arlington High School. I believe we can just sweep this year, guys, and that's why we need your help. We need your help spreading the word. We have a QR code on all the advertising we had, digital or physical. I'd love to connect with whoever is in charge of that, and that's all my time. Thank you so much. And any questions? You have 30 seconds.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Reavis.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That concludes the non-agenda forum for tonight. We'll move on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Smith?
Trustees, thank you for your time tonight. I will be brief in making sure that we highlight some of the amazing things happening in our school district. I did want to draw your attention to the priorities that you adopted last year as a Board of Trustees. I did want to let you know, as we move into the month of September, you're going to have quite a few things coming your way as we talk about finalizing our strategic plan, adopting a new vision, being clear about priorities, and key performance measures that we have in our system. One of the things that I'm going to ask you to consider is possibly rewording the fifth priority on resources. One of the pieces of feedback that we've gotten as a system is that our most important resource in our system, our staff, doesn't show up well in our priorities that we have so far. So, right now, we're working on some drafts of what that will look like coming forward, and just wanted to make sure you had a heads up as we move into the month of September. We had a fantastic start to the school year in Arlington ISD, and both on the first day and leading up to the first day, here are a few quick highlights from the last two weeks. I started the first day of school like thousands of our students. I got picked up by a school bus very, very early in the morning, but when I got on board, there were two CBS Texas Morning Show anchors who interviewed me live on TV about the new school year. Then they dropped us off at Lamar High School as the marching band played and cheerleaders cheered. It was all part of CBS's School Bus Party Special. It was a lot of fun for everyone, and they showcased many of our amazing students and teachers at Lamar. After Lamar, we took off on our annual first day of school tour, visiting five schools across the district, including our brand-new Joey Rodriguez Junior High. It was a lot of fun to be there when students entered their new school for the very first time. While the first week is the primary highlight, boy, I messed up this. While the first week is the primary highlight of my superintendent's report, it's also important to note that I am on the wrong paragraph right now, that we we had some amazing things happening for our students and our community partners prior to the start of school this year. First, the Texas Rangers honored this year's Richard Green Scholars at their game on August 9th. These six students, one from each of our traditional high schools, are impressive leaders who will each receive a $10,000 scholarship and an immersive internship that includes rotations during their senior year at a number of community service and local government entities. One of those rotations is right here with the Arlington ISD administration. Special thanks to, obviously, the Green family and former Mayor Richard Green, but also the Texas Rangers, who I believe, if I heard this right, in the history of the Richard Green scholarships, have donated $1.5 million to help us have this program in Arlington ISD. Speaking of the Rangers, Corey Seager and his wife Madison held their annual Corey Seager Shopping Spree at Academy Sports and Outdoors in Arlington the Saturday before school started. The Seagres gave 30 of our students in the Student Outreach Services Program $400 for back-to-school shopping, but they didn't just give them the money, they helped the students shop, along with several other of the Texas Rangers team, Wyatt Langford, Josh Jung, Jack Leider, and Jake Berger. It was a really cool experience for the students and a big help to families who need it the most. Last but not least, I want to highlight an ag teacher for the second meeting in a row. Megan Brundette, our floral design teacher at the CTC, earned a distinguished certificate, Floral Designer Designation, after completing the Professional Floral Design Evaluation this summer. This isn't easy to obtain and requires a high level of artistry, technical skill, and floral knowledge. Megan's achievement means Arlington ISD is now one of only two programs in the state of Texas to have a floral teacher with this certification. Finally, before I conclude, let me give you a quick enrollment update. As of today, reported enrollment stands at 50,613 students, and that was still moving throughout the day today. However, we anticipate continued growth through at least the first week of September. For those of you that wondered, that's about 2,000 more students than showed up on the first day of school, so we are busy every day at our campuses, continuing to enroll students and get them into our classrooms. As a reminder, enrollment fluctuates greatly at the beginning of a school year, and we will continue to provide you updates along the way. That concludes my superintendent's report for this month.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Are there trustees with reports this evening? Ms. Richardson?
I did not get to go with you on the first day of school, Dr. Smith. I was doing my own back-to-school visits, and I got to go with Kelly Horn, who is our Facilities Director. Is that the correct title? Is that...
He is our Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Construction.
Yeah, that's what I said. I mean, it was getting, Kelly and I were able to go and do. Kelly, how many visits do we do? Seven? We did seven visits, but I got to start taking my daughter, a freshman at Arlington High, to school. I don't know if you know this, she didn't really understand that when the deputy chief superintendent walks you into the building with Dr. Collins, she just knows that's that's Dr. Collins. Why, why, why is that a big? So, she had a personal escort to make sure she did not get lost headed into campus. Lots of fun to see the kids headed in. We were able to do that, but after we finished at Arlington High kicking off, we headed to Piercy STEM Academy, where we met with Principal Sarah Brooks. Officer John Noel is there, and if you see, he was standing by the Today Will Be a Good Day. Every kid that came through got a smile, got a high five, was made to feel welcome. Kelly, Dr. Lee, and I each got to go and try to do the impossible shot. I know, Matt, you may have tried to do that before. I want you to know, we got very close. In fact, yeah, I got, I hit the rim three times, and the last time, it popped out. I was robbed. I have to go back and try the impossible shot again. We headed over to Segin High School to meet with Principal Lenson, AP Coronado, Assistant Principal Shanna Moore, and AP Hicks. One of the great things we got to do was meet with the kitchen staff, and Yolanda has invited us to come back with our food service, food service director, David Lewis, to come back and try the food, because while we were there, she was making nachos, pizza, chicken alfredo, and something else. I don't remember what it was. We secretly were hoping she was going to ask if we wanted to try anything, but she did not offer, but it smelled so good. So, we're excited to go back and looking forward to having lunch there. It's also the home of Officer Washington. Some of you may have seen him on the different news stations. He's the dancing officer that went viral a couple of weeks ago, so we were able to pay a visit to him as well. Stop number four for us that day was at Ashworth Elementary with Principal Stacy Maddox. And tonight, we did recognition of Associate Principal Herman Kilgore. We went him while we were there. Dr. Stephanie Lee was there again. We were crossing paths with her all day long. Ashworth is actually having a great event coming up, trustees, September 18th. They are going to be doing their Pin Wheels for Peace event again, sets where Segin Band marches down, performs, all the kids come out, police department is there, and so that's an exciting event. We then headed over to Owlsley Junior High to see Principal Amber Price, met with the ratified principal, we had done just last meeting, Alan Blanchard. Their counselor, Nisha Price, was there, but they were in the gym, making sure all those parents that either hadn't registered, didn't have the right paperwork, thought they were registered but didn't, they were in there making sure it all was going smoothly. It was really impressive to see what they were doing in the gym. It was a well-oiled machine. The other thing that we got to do was be in the passing periods to see all the kids in the hallways. Guys, they survived without their technology. It was old school. They had pen and paper. They had sticky notes, asking for directions. Kelly was really great because he had designed those buildings. He knew when the kids said, where is class 201, Kelly was actually able to tell them exactly where to go and was helpful in that. Afterwards, we went over to Beckham Elementary to visit Principal Wilkes. At the front desk, you may see that smiling face of Sandra Green. She's the former clerk from Miller Elementary and is now at Beckham. We even got to see our special student friend. If you see right in the middle, it was Kay's birthday, and he's there with his assistant helper, Kristy Small, but he was really excited to have his birthday. He had his glow-in-the-dark spinner out and was very excited to be headed that way. One of the great things you'll see in the very bottom left-hand corner in the Beckham Blazer shirt, this is their cafeteria monitor. She's been there for 19 years. Her kids have gone through the district. She is there. She came in with several of her friends and actually decorated the cafeteria the week before school started, just because she loves being there so much, and it's been such a special part of her family and where she's been. And last but not least, for sure, we went to, I always say it wrong, guys, Beben, Be-
Bebenzy.
Bebenzy. I want to say Bebenzy. It is not Bebenzy. Bebenzy, with Principal Sophie Heck, AP Jessica Garcia. We met a great librarian, Brenda Diopola, and of course, their STEM manager, Joyce Doolittle, gave us a great tour of the STEM lab. It was fun to see the kids. They were kindergartners in gym already, learning what to do, how to sit at lunch, but seeing our campuses full of kids again and students, it was really great. And that was all done before 12:30. Kelly is a well-oiled machine if you want to run and do visits on time. I cannot believe we got through seven visits before 12:30 in the afternoon. So, Kelly, you run an efficient team. Thanks for letting me tag along.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Are there any other trustees with reports tonight? All right. Seeing none. Madam Secretary, do we have any matters that have been reported for further consideration?
We do not.
All right. There being no more items for consideration on the agenda and nothing to discuss in closed session, I will call this meeting adjourned at 8:48 PM.